Good morning, everybody. Welcome. Sorry for the delay this morning. We apologize that we did have a lengthy Fire Commission Board meeting this morning. But we are going to jump right into our regular meeting. So I'm going to call the Boarder, the regular meeting of the Washoe County Border County Commissioners for September 17th at this time. Um, feeling Kramer. Would you, would you sit up front? You have to, you have to lead us in the pledge. Good morning.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mom. All right. Madam, Madam Clerk, can I get a, you guys are changing up on this whole thing. Madam Clerk, can I get a rule call, please?
Yes, sir. Chair Von Hartung is not present. Vice Chair Bob Lucy?
Here.
Marsha Burke Bigler?
Here.
Kitty Jung?
Present.
Jeanne Herman?
Here.
Interim County Manager Dave Solero?
Here.
Deputy District Attorney Nathan Edwards?
Present.
And I'm Jan Galacini, Chief Deputy County Clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. We are on to new employee introduction. Mr. Solero.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we have some new employees in the audience and they'd like to come down and introduce themselves. So we go down and shake their hands and welcome them to Washoe County.
Sophia Christianman, I'm a Washoe County Park Planner with the Community Services Department.
Matthew Filley, Community Service Department, GMADA Specialist.
Brian Robards, Washoe County Animal Services, Animal Caretaker.
Roland Albertson, I'm an Animal Control Officer with Washoe County Animal Services.
Mr. Manager, the floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Chair, that takes us to item number four, which is a presentation of certificates for our excellence in public service here at Washoe County. As you are all aware, Washoe County encourages lifelong learning and professional development for all employees. Administered by the Human Resource Department, excellence in public service is a series of certificate programs designed to support employee development and performance. The completion of these courses over two years demonstrates the employee's commitment to continuous personal and professional improvement and to Washoe, excuse me, and to Washoe County's journey of excellence. So we are pleased to recognize quite a few employees today, starting with, let me just make sure I've got this in the right order. Missing one here. Starting with Juliana Anieros, Library Assistant Two for the library, who has completed the Essentials of Personal Effectiveness Certificate Program. Michael Gonzalez, a Senior Appraiser for the Assessors' Office, has completed the Essential of Management Development. Michael could not make it here today, but Nora will take this certificate. We have Selena Gonzalez Valenzuela, Legal Secretary for the District Attorney's Office, who has completed the Essentials of Management Development Certificate Program. Next, we have Lori Griffey, Administrative Assistant for the Health District, who has completed the Essentials of High Performing Teams Certificate Program and the Promote Yourself Next, we have Mayella Lozano, Legal Secretary with the District Attorney's Office, who has completed the Essentials of Management Development Certificate Program. We have Lindsey Nolan, Library Assistant Three from the library system, who has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. Next, we have Mary Ferris, Family Support Supervisor for the District Attorney's Office, who has completed the Essentials of High Performing Teams Certificate Program. We have Tamara Pierce, Family Support Supervisor for the District Attorney's Office, who has completed the Essentials of High Performing Teams Certificate Program. Next, we have Lynn Sato, Office Support Specialist for the Assessors' Office, who has completed the Essentials of High Performing Teams Certificate Program. And we have Crystal Thumer, Legal Secretary for the District Attorney's Office, who has completed the Essentials of High Performing Teams. That's the last of our certificates today, and congratulations to all our employees who have taken the time to educate themselves a little bit more with the great programs we have at Washoe County.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Board, I want to thank you for the time and commitment that you continue to put forth for this organization. It's this kind of commitment to proving and bettering yourselves here that it makes this organization great. And on behalf of myself and the Commissioners, thank you for all the time and effort you've put into that. We appreciate it. One last round of applause. All right, Mr. Manager, that takes us to item five.
Yes, item five is our public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission's agenda. The Commissioner will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. At this time, I will be calling public comment this morning. So I have on the list a number of people. I have first signed in Ms. Sarah Schmitz, followed by Mr. Tim Fata.
Good morning. Sarah Schmitz, Incline Village. Last spring during early primary voting, it is known that citizens of Incline Village in Crystal Bay lodged complaints against IBG trustee Phil Heran to the Secretary of State, the Registrar of Voters, and Commissioner Burke Bigler. It is also known that trustee Heran was removed as a poll worker and did not return in either the primary or the general election. This issue seemed to evaporate until May of this year. In May, an employee of the Registrar of Voters spoke and answered questions at a public meeting. I asked if an investigation was conducted on the matter and the results. The gentleman stated that after an investigation, it was determined that the released poll worker would not be allowed to be a future poll worker. As you know, I reported this fact, which was quickly contradicted by our Registrar of Voters. The Registrar stated her office doesn't conduct investigations and that she asked Mr. Heran to step down to avoid any appearance of impropriety. She said this action was taken by mutual consent. Public records requests reveal that trustee Heran was surprised by the removal. The Registrar knew that he was a seated IBG trustee, yet she allowed him to work the poll until only three days before the end of the primary. What motivated her to take, to make this request, other than complaints that she had missed were never investigated? Since an investigation wasn't conducted by Ms. Spicula, we inquired with the Secretary of State as to their investigation. The Office of the SOS stated that complaints were hearsay. However, not one person filing a formal written complaint was ever contacted. Then, after receiving responses to our public records requests, we learned there were no written reports and that there are no procedures for the Office of the SOS to follow regarding election integrity complaints. No report, no procedures? Then another interesting public record from the Office of the SOS showed the investigation was called off at the request of Washoe County. Who in Washoe County instructed the Office of the SOS to stop an investigation? Then, when asked the same question a few weeks ago at a public community meeting, Commissioner Burke Bigler stated the Registrar reviewed the situation and couldn't determine if anything unlawful occurred and determined it best to exclude elected officials from serving as poll workers. So did the Registrar of Voters investigate? My point to all of this is to show how truth seems to be obscure and statements being made contradict each other. So what is the truth? It is clear that there was never an investigation conducted by either the SOS or the Registrar of Voters, and the Office of the SOS stated that there are no formal procedures for investigating election integrity complaints. Before we have our next 2020 primary election, I urge you to ensure that the Registrar of Voters and the Secretary of State have procedures for handling complaints. We need to be confident that the integrity of our elections are protected. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Schmitz. Next, I have Mr. Tim Fata, followed by Ms. Tammy Holt Still.
For the record, Tim Fata, Commissioners, thank you. I guess today's meeting, we're hearing a lot of things, the Fire Department, the whole works, and it comes down to where's the money or who's got the money? We know that our city and our county is being overwhelmed with developments. Lots of infrastructure that we don't have needs to be upgraded and repaired. Fire, police, those services. I live in Lemon Valley and I watched these, the flooded area and the pumps that are going on. I question you. Why are we pumping from one part of the lake into another little holding area and now it drains again and pumps back? We're pumping affluent up against people's properties? Next question, do we own those pumps? Does the county own them? Are you still renting them? What amount of rent are you paying for them every day? What does it cost us since this, this fiasco of the storm and all of the flooding and all of the barriers? How much is the county spending on the pumps? Are you renting them? Do you own them? Or have you just gone and paid multiple times the fact that you could have bought them if you're renting them? Is there an RPO on them today? Is there a plan to buy them? What are we going to, what are you, what are you going to do with them? That's my question. Where, where'd the money, where is the money? Where's the money go? Is it being spent in a good manner or is it being wasted on some things that could be done better? Mr. Solero, as the manager, you have a lot of tasks to go and find out how we can spend our money and get resources that we need to the people in the North Valleys, the South Valleys, and our whole county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fata. Next, Ms. Tammy Holt Still, followed by Ms. Elise Weatherly. Can we get the overhead, please?
Tammy Holt Still, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. The water's still there. I'm still here. That started too soon. Don't appreciate it. This is the NAC that you guys received before regarding Class C affluent and what it can and cannot be done. I was at a meeting with NDP this last Friday. It is now on your permit that it has to be 300 feet away when the permit is approved, not just 100 foot. This was the pumping that was done Saturday morning. This is the pumping that was done yesterday morning. And as you see, there's a lot of foam, which tells me there's a lot of chemicals in it and you could smell the chemicals. This is Saturday morning. What it looked like around the manhole for AT&amp;T. Come on. This is Monday morning around that man, say manhole. After calling 311, I have to say thank you to 311. They did a really good job of getting somebody under, out there and under, getting it under control. It was finally pumped away. This is this morning. It still needs to be pumped away. This is Lemon Drive yesterday between Water Ash and, Water Ash and Oregon, because there are no pumps to pump the water away. As you can see, all the way down, it was getting close to being all the way over the, I guess that would be the southbound side. Now, NAC or NRS states, it doesn't matter what medium I ask for something in, I should be receiving it. August 28th, I, you all have received an email from me several times regarding, I wanted the newest current records for both the, the testing that, complete testing that was done, that was certified. I have now filled out a federal, the, the requests through the feds. I've also done it for the contract that is supposed to be between North Valley's Investments for that property. You have issues, people. Things are not being done. You are not transparent. You're not doing your job. When you are, you have, you violated NRS, you're violating Fed Act. You guys need to give information when it's requested and I expect to receive it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holt Still.
Mr. Chair, the Speaker raised an objection, Ms. Holt Still, when she took the podium about the time starting too soon, and I'm wondering if Mr. Chair would inquire of Ms. Holt Still if she wanted some additional time to accommodate that.
Ms. Holt Still, would you like your additional few seconds?
Yeah, I would like to also say that, thank you, Ms. Burke Bigler, for getting ahold of somebody to spray for the mosquitoes that I got bitten when I was taking my pictures on Saturday and that you have, that is private property that you're making a contract to put affluent on and that's not public property. There's no barriers. You need to look at the NACs and the NRSs and make sure you are doing what needs to be done.
Thank you, Ms. Holt Still.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. I'm going to go ahead and do something that my brother-in-law did many years ago up in Tahoe. He went, "Good morning, world," from his outside balcony before he met my sister, whose name is also spelled L-A-U-R-I-E, like Griffey. Well, I didn't know at the time that this was right after his sister-in-law, Darlene Farren, had been murdered by the Zodiac Killer. And he still was able to say, "Good morning, world." And I'm going, "Well, how in the world can you do that?" Well, I think what it is, is Ms. Sarah Schmitz said things just kind of evaporate. So Mr. Farren, brother-in-law Darlene Farren, thinks that once somebody dies, they simply disappear. So there's no accountability and no judgment. So if that were the case, then I wouldn't be here because nothing would matter. But instead, I want to say thank you to Sam Dene for the C-130. I was taken on a flight in a C-130 by Air National Guard, and if I could have married that pilot, if I was allowed to, I would have, because he let me stand up the entire trip so I wouldn't throw up. So there's some things to say thank you for. I was over at the Sparks Justice Court earlier because I, I missed, I went to an appointment at the wrong time, so I had some extra time. So I went over there and I asked one of the officers, I go, "Three questions for you." And there was an attorney standing by him. I go, "Is our state bird the vulture?" And when, when he heard that, the attorney went and left because he knew what I was after. And I said, "What would a concerned citizen do if she saw a judge in action that sided with the liars and had compassion on the lawbreakers?" And it's a perpetual motion thing. Is that what modus operandi stands for, is mean you do the same thing over and over and over again? Well, guess what? City of Sparks has a judge that does that perpetually. What am I supposed to do about that? And I also asked this officer, I go, "Why did it take so long for the judge to come out? Why, if they meet at nine o'clock, do we wait for 20 minutes for him to come out so we can stand up and be pretty much ignored?" And he said, "Well, there's a reason for it." I go, "Can you divulge that reason?" He goes, "No." And I said, "Well, I'm going to assume it's that he can prepare for the cases." My question is, we do have lots of questions, like where is the money, right? Oh, by the way, Paul Orphan has the money. Why would he not take some time, since he doesn't start till nine o'clock, and review those things ahead of time? Why do we have to wait? So I will say that Yeshua was a table tipper, that what he did was, there was two groups of people back in his day, Gentiles and Jews. Guess what he did? He grafted Man Israel. And also, he has cut some people off. Paul Farren is absolutely wrong. We do not just disappear when we die, and I think most of us know that. A couple of ladies at the Justice Court, the police officers, are with me on board. I will be recording a song called "Liar." You know the old song, da-da-da-da-da, liar? Because she said, they said, it applies to every single political position that we have. And I said, "No, it does not. There are some people that do tell the truth and there are some people that lie. We're going to stick with the truth tellers." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Next, I have Mr. Jeff Church, followed by Ms. Lori Beach.
While Jeff is approaching the bench or the podium, he does have a handout for the Board and for the Record.
Good morning, folks, and thank you, Elise, for your comments on Mr. Paul Orphan, the convicted embezzler who makes $60,000 a year in per salary from Washoe County and still owes restitution. However, I'm not here to talk about that. My name is Jeff Church. I run RenoTaxRevolt.com. Two days from now, September 19th, there's a homeless visioning session for COC providers, for the Reno City Council and for the CHAB. I want to make clear, first of all, the notice on this was put out one day ahead of the minimum OML requirements, even though we've known about it for months and months. It is not a community forum. Anybody that says it's a community forum is either being deceptive or doesn't understand what's going on. There is no public input allowed during the discussions during this meeting. It is not content neutral. Anybody that wants to speak can only do it before the meeting, when it first starts, before you've heard the presentation. Well, how can you comment on the presentation when you haven't heard it? Or you can comment at the end, after they've already voted on their decision. And the quote from the agenda, "Finalizing next steps preventing and ending chronic homelessness." Now, we've seen this movie before. There are alternative ideas, but they're not allowed to be heard at this meeting. Again, as I said, we've heard this meeting before. These ideas have been tried and failed in California. We know what they're going to say, more taxes. And where are those taxes going to come from? It's going to come from the taxpayer, probably in the sense of an annual car registration tax from Washoe County. I want to quote from the ORCODE study that you would probably hear September 19th, and it says, "Connect individuals and families experiencing homelessness to permanent housing without preconditions and barriers to entry such as sobriety, treatment, or service participation requirements." I mean, does that sink in? They're going to give free housing to criminals, to homeless, to illegal aliens, to drunks, to people that are severely mentally ill, that can't take care of themselves without preconditions? That's outrageous. And that's what you're going to probably be voting on with the annual car registration tax, which is supposed to generate eight to 12 million dollars a year. Any tax should not be rushed through. We do need a community forum. We need to meet and confer. We need to talk. We need to negotiate, not rush this through. Washoe County has the highest taxes in the state for sales tax, highest property tax in Reno. Gas is 30 cents more than Carson City and Friendly. And now we're going to have a new car registration annual tax that'll add 50 to 100 dollars per vehicle per year. This has not been approved by the CHAB. The CHAB accepted the report, they didn't approve it. And this is a plan to enable homelessness with free unconditional housing. It's wrong. We need to have measurements, audit, oversight. We need to meet and determine how we're going to do this and not rush into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Church. Next, I have Ms. Lori Beach, followed by Mr. Levi Hooper.
Mr. Chair, while the next speaker is making her way to the podium, for the record, I'll note that Mr. Church's handout was copied and placed at the back of the room in case anybody here wants to take a look.
Welcome, Ms. Beach.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioner. While I understand moving, it is easier to evaporate, absorb the affluent in one-inch increments than two-inch increments, so I understood the reasoning for moving some of the affluent back over to spread it out. But as Ms. Holtstead has shown you by the pictures, you're putting it into one small, like pie of an area. It is going on to residents' property. You're exceeding the 100-foot buffer. I even thought about sending an email and moving that hose down and spreading it out more. I personally appreciate every single effort you are trying for us. Do we all accept it? No. I personally, Lori Beach, I thank you for your effort, but let's also protect those that are there. I also want to bring up, Mr. Solero, I know the comment is to you, I'm just seeing what happened. Mr. Solero brought up that there's residents within, within Lemon Valley that are endangering county workers and contractors. I made very public statements about how I feel about that, but I would also, not a tit for tat, but say sheriff's departments are speeding like crazy. I understand when they're going to a call, maybe put your hazards on. I understand you don't want to go with lights blaring and sirens blaring and all that, but put your hazards on to let those of us know that you're not just speeding because you have nothing better to do. Your county workers are exceeding the 25 mile an hour. I personally witnessed one in a stake truck hit that last bump that's there for the generator, hit it so hard, the stake sides came off the truck, fell in. Luckily, two residents that are so, that are harming these people stopped to make it possible to put on their blinkers for this employee to get out of his truck, retrieve the item that fell off his truck, plus get his stake side back. So even the county workers are not respecting it. I'm not, I'm not going to say, "Do I speed through there?" I'm not going to lie to you. Of cour-, yes, I do. But when I see your workers and I see the people out there trying to do their job, there's nobody out there that's trying to harm people. We know they're there for us. So to sit there and put a blanket statement that we're, we're harming people is disingenuous. And I would like to also know, do you send security to all the community meetings or do you just send it to the meetings being held within Lemon Valley? Because we were at the one and there was a security and I've never seen them at county, at the community meetings before. And in my last little bit of remaining time, I'd like to say, if possible, if there is an officer that is not on an active call, it'd be really nice if they would sit in the school zone there on Lemon Valley. I have witnessed these cars, there's a gentleman, they're just, every morning just bebobs hauling butt through there, and maybe let's start pulling them over, fine them, because I personally had to pay a fine one time, not in a school zone. And I don't, I don't speed there anymore. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Beach. Mr. Levi Hooper, followed by Mr. Sam Dene. Welcome, Mr. Hooper.
Hi, everybody. How's everyone today? I'm here, my name is Levi Hooper. I'm the voice of the downtrodden. I just been coming here because I have days off and I want to come down and, you know, express myself. But going to affordable housing, I'm going to speak on that, of course, is what I said last, last week when I was up here talking about the marijuana tax, that it's a lot of money, there's a lot, a lot of money there that can be taken out to be used for this affordable housing act, I believe. I mean, I, I know that people at the dispensaries are going to be upset about that because the taxes might go up even more if you guys do do that, but for what it is and what it's worth, I think it'd be a good, good route to go to help with the affordable housing. And going off of earlier, someone was talking about, about the requirements for the affordable, affordable housing, I believe there should always be requirements, you know, to get into something like that, that it shouldn't be just free for anybody to get to. People are drugged, on alcohol and stuff like that, that there should be some kind of drug testing or something along those lines, they let people in, not to discriminate to people, but just to, you know, give everyone a fair shot, that people that are doing well should be able to, you know, get a fair shot at it. So I don't really, I hate to waste time, but I don't really have much more to say about that, but that's about all. So have a great day, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Mr. Sam Dene, followed by Ms. Kelly Gately Seals.
Sam Dene, Dene, the guard angel against, mainly against media wacko freaks, sometimes against bureaucrats. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I spent many years flying fighters and bombers defending our nation. In the last 25 years, I've spent my life philanthropically overseeing and watchdogging, guard angel-ing, I call it, not watchdogging, guard angel-ing against the government, but mainly against the media wacko freaks. And you say, "Why do you call them the media wacko freaks?" And the worst of the media is the Reno Gazette Journal. The television and the radio is not much better, but I'll stick, I'll stick with the Reno Gazette wacko freaks. I'll give you a couple of examples, and it's not always about Sam. It's not always about Sam, but here's, but I have brought these issues up. There's a gentleman over there at Reno City Council, he was the city manager for 20, for six years, Andrew Klinger. He did a phenomenal job. And then a couple of ladies got together without any evidence, really, and brought charges against him supposedly for sexual harassment, which is a whole, anyway, the problem is that the Reno Gazette attacked that man and his family mercilessly for six months, and finally the Reno, the Reno City Council fired him. And now today, or yesterday, they announced that these three- they announced that these three, these two women have settled with no evidence. And here's this man, Mr. Klinger, and I don't even know him. Here he is with his family, beautiful wife, and he's being accused of sexual harassment. And the Reno Gazette has put all of the blame on him. Just nothing, they don't explain that this was a settlement. They said it's a settlement, but it was just a settlement. He said, she said, no proof. Anyway, just one example of how evil the Reno Gazette is. Then there is this other thing, and this has to do with massive amount of citizens' taxes. The Reno Gazette has had, is basically morally bankrupt and bankrupt, because their building has been empty, has been empty over there for two years. Empty, and nobody even, and for sale, and nobody going to buy it. Suddenly, some developers say, "Hey, let's buy it." And they talked the Reno City Council into buying it. And it's going to end up costing the citizens $20 million, $40 million. $7 million they paid for the building, and then $33 million more to bring it up to code and up to date. A 40-year-old building. Why don't they listen to Sam, report Sam's ideas? My idea is, was, and it's an extensive idea, but why not take that $40 million and refurbish, if it's necessary, refurbish the current police station? In other words, they're going to end up tearing down a really good police station to rebuild another one that isn't really... But they don't report it. That's the Reno Gazette wacko freaks, corrupt, mendacious, perverted, deceptive, rotten, evil, wicked, and treacherous. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Denae. Ms. Kelly Gately Seals, followed by Ms. Christine T. I don't have a whole last name. We'll go with T. Have a time. Welcome.
Good morning, Vice Chair Lucy and members of the Commission. My name's Kelly Gately Seals. I'm with the Washoe County Health District's Chronic Disease Prevention Program. And I am here today because the Washoe County Health District would like to present and recognize the Board of County Commissioners for your leadership in providing smoke-free, vape-free outdoor recreation areas by establishing smoke-free, vape-free parks and open spaces. The Extra Mile Award, or EMA, honors organizations that have gone above and beyond requirements of the Nevada Clean Indoor Air Act, making the conscious decision to go smoke-free when the law does not require them to. The collaboration on this regional effort included Washoe County, as well as the city of Reno, the city of Sparks, and the Sun Valley General Improvement District. The collaborative effort exemplifies a growing movement toward increasing smoke-free public places. In October 2017, there were over 1,500 jurisdictions that had already passed smoke-free parks. And at this time, we can be proud to join that list of many other jurisdictions. I'll remind you that smoke-free parks had significant public support. A survey was done by the Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation, and it found that 76% of respondents indicated a desire for regulation-governing smoking in parks. They mentioned health reasons, fire risk, and cigarette litter. We also heard from Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful that cigarette waste is the number-one piece of litter found in our parks on local cleanup days. We know that this discarded tobacco waste can contaminate our waterways and impact pets and wildlife. 85% of Washoe County residents do not smoke, and there's a growing demand for smoke-free environments. In July, the Chronic Disease Prevention Program did a survey at a local outdoor event and got some feedback. And I'd like to share a couple of responses from that feedback. People were asked whether, why they do or don't support smoke-free outdoor events. And some folks that shared that they do support said that, "I have asthma that is triggered by smoke. I used to smoke, and being around it is hard. Our son is on oxygen, and I have lung disease." So this is a very real experience that our citizens have going to even outdoor places and being exposed to smoke. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge and thank Eric Crum, the Washoe County Operations Division Director, Chris Nenzel, who participated on the Smoke-Free Park Task Force as a Parks Commissioner for Washoe County, and Colleen Wallace Barnum, the Parks Operations Superintendent, for her work in helping facilitate signage. And on behalf of the Washoe County Health District's Chronic Disease Program, it's our honor to present the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners with the Extra Mile Award for providing smoke-free environments for our residents, families, and visitors. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gately. We appreciate that. Thank you.
And if there's an opportunity for a photo, that would be wonderful.
We will definitely do that right after our public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one last, Ms. Christine T. I apologize. My screen is not...
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christine Thompson. If Thompson is my last name. I am the Community Programs Manager with the Nevada Cancer Coalition. I had the pleasure of working closely with Kelly throughout the nearly two-year-long process of, as the task force was working on investigating whether smoke-free parks and outdoor places made sense in our region. And I'm here representing our organization because we also want to recognize you and commend you for your progressive initiative in passing smoke-free, vape-free ordinance for Washoe County parks and outdoor spaces, helping ensure that parkgoers are not exposed to the toxic effects that are a result of secondhand smoke and secondhand vape exposure. Nevada Cancer Coalition applauds the Washoe County Commission for protecting the health of all the residents and visitors here. And we applaud the important collaboration between the city of Reno, the city of Sparks, Washoe County, and the Sun Valley Improvement District, so that this is a region-wide reality. It is a wonderful thing for our community. I was the sole public representative at virtually all of the task force meetings during that nearly two-year-long process. And I also wanted to commend then Parks and Rec Director Eric Crum and Parks Commissioner Chris Nenzel for their leadership and cooperation in working together. We are grateful to them. We are grateful to you. And we appreciate your support for ensuring the health of all of us here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Ms. Thompson, if you guys would please stay around after the proclamations, we'd love to get a picture with you. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I do have an email copy that was submitted, and it will be placed... It was from Ann Marie Grant, and it will be placed on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate that. Seeing no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. We will move on to Item 6. Mr. Manager.
Item number 6 is the Commissioners' County Managers' Announcements, Reports, Updates to Include Boards and Commissioned Updates. Request for information and topics for future agendas.
Okay. Mr. Manager, do you have anything to say?
I do have one item. I just wanted to let everybody know that we're excited to announce the 2019 Washoe Impact Awards, just one month from today, on October 17th, here in these commission chambers. At 4:30 PM, we will be doing our revamped State of the County address that highlights all of our key accomplishments in the past year and recognizes the employees that make those events happen. So the award categories are based on our core values here at Washoe County, which are quality public service, integrity, and effective communication. Our community partners have received their invites, and so we hope to see you all on October 17th.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I would like to ask, I mean, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask Mr. Manager for him to look in, or have staff to look in, to what are the procedures for handling complaints with the voter registrar? Because I, like Ms. Schmidt, agree that there were some, that was, that information wasn't clear. And I know I had a couple of conversations with several people. And I would really like to know, what do we do when somebody complains? And who investigates it? Is this something that goes to the Secretary of State? What's the process? And so if you would, please, put that together for us. I would appreciate it. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I would like to add to what Commissioner Burke Bigler requested about the Secretary of State. Can we do some research and find out what is their standard operating procedure? Where, I want to see the written, where, you know, what does it say that the Secretary of State does in terms of formality or lack thereof? What is the, what is an investigation? What constitutes an investigation? And then also, our registrar, our voter, should have some policy that reflects that as well. So could we get a deep dive on that and then have staff come back with recommendations that should be implemented before the 2020 primary in June for this board to adopt and implement? I think it sounds like there's a lot of confusion there. And if we can get it in writing and something that we vote on together, then we know that at least the confusion isn't there what is supposed to happen. I did want to let the board know. I went to an environmental engineer's salon, I guess you would call it, or seminar up at UNR. I asked staff to sign me up for it because Alex Hoff from One Truckee River, the one who's trying to create a cleaner Truckee River, a more navigable Truckee River, both pedestrians and people in water-faring vehicles. And this was all about stormwater management in one hour salon. And it was junior and seniors at UNR that were engineer majors, as well as grad students. And Mr. Peterson from Jensen Precast did the presentation. And I've already circled back with staff to know what we are doing for low-impact development and a real trend in stormwater maintenance and management, which is capturing it for use some other time, rather than seeing it as something that needs to be just get rid of, that you can actually turn it into a commodity, especially in a desert. So I've already expressed my need for more information from the interim county manager, Mr. Solaro. But I will tell you that this is my notes from this one-hour salon, which included questions at the end. That was time well spent for me to hear it from a subject matter expert, what's going on nationally, internationally, and how stormwater is being treated and looked at very differently today and in the future. So I strongly suggest everybody go. I don't think it cost. I think it was part, I think the students get extra credit for being there and write a paper or something. But it was really impressive. And I have to say, the UNR students in engineering that are senior and junior level, I was wildly impressed with their great... I'm sure they were getting points for asking questions, too. I don't care. They were intelligent questions, and they were engaged. And, I mean, I kind of was embarrassing the old lady in the college room, and I had to ask somebody for a piece of paper because I forgot paper there. So I did have a pen, but I had to borrow a piece of paper. But that was really time well spent. And I would encourage the rest of the Commissioners, if you want to know more about it, ask Susie about it, because they're doing it every week through the month of October with different, and it's at 4 o'clock. And what I love about it, one and done. One hour, and we're done with the conversation instead of trying to waste time to make me sit there. It was very professional. And I want to thank Susie Baldespin for making that happen for me to get there. So if you need any more information, I'm happy to give you that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner John. Commissioner Herman, do you have anything this morning?
I want to share a few things with this board. I did get the opportunity to travel last week, so I apologize for my absence. But I was in Washington, DC, working with our delegation and the Department of Transportation through my capacity at RTC. We were able to secure a number of grants that will help not only mass transit within our community, but hopefully road repair and future grants out through Pyramid Valley and the North Valleys. So we were very fortunate to have those meetings. And so that was very beneficial. Also, while I was gone, I received a letter from National Association of Counties. I've been named a chairman of the Subcommittee for Transportation. And so I will be participating in those meetings on a larger scale as it pertains to national policy, pertaining to transportation throughout the country, and bringing West Coast issues to Washington, DC, which is quite a challenge because most of, as Commissioner Herman would attest to, most of our delegation and most of the members of Congress don't believe of anything past the Mississippi, or, I guess, west of the Mississippi. We kind of get that shorthand to the stick. So we need to quite do a good job of educating our members in Congress quite often. So, and I know Commissioner Herman was also back there at the same time attending a different conference on payment and lieu of taxes and educating our members back there conference on payment and lieu of taxes and educating our members back there in regards to those issues. So, we were diligently working on behalf of the citizens while we were back there. So, it was a good, good times well spent, a long trip. But anyways, aside from that, I have nothing further for the, so we will close this item and bring it back to the manager. Manager, we are on to item seven, proclamations.
Yeah, that takes us on to item number seven, proclamations. We have five proclamations today, starting with 7A1 through 7A5. 7A1 is to proclaim the month of October 2019 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And we have Rhonda Walker, Elaine Anagnostu, and Marilyn Kramer here as staff. Come on down, ladies. Please join Commissioner Burke Pigler.
Hello, ladies. Great to see you. I'm so glad you're here and could join us on this. This is such an important issue. So many people in America, so many women in America get breast cancer, and this is an issue that is very near and dear to my heart, and so, and I'm glad that you are all survivors.
Thank you.
So, let's read this proclamation. Whereas, oops, put your glasses on so you can see, Marsha. Whereas, one in eight women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime. And whereas, the leading risk factor for breast cancer is simply being a woman. And most breast cancer, about 85% occurs in women who have no family history of breast cancer. And whereas, breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer in women as well as the second-leading cause of death among women. And whereas, each year it is estimated that more than 252,710 women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and more than 40,500 will die. And whereas, Washoe County recognizes and supports employees and their families who are currently battling breast cancer, those who have survived the battle, and especially remember our employees who have lost the battle to breast cancer. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim October 2019 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, dated this date, September 17th, 2009, and signed by our fair chair, who is not with us today, Mr. Vaughn Hartung. Ladies, please introduce yourself and, and make a few comments.
Marilyn Kramer, Office of the County Manager. I just want to say thank you. I just received my five-year mark, which is a, a good one. So, I'm on the road, free and clear now. So, thank you. And thank you for the support. I have to thank Washoe County and my Washoe County family for all the support that they have given me the last five years. Elaine?
Elaine Anagnostu, Human Resources. I am 11 years now.
Wow.
And again, just to reiterate, thank you so much for the family support from county members.
Rhonda Walker, Human Services Agency, 10-year survivor as of September 4th, which was also my birthday. The county really came through when I was going through treatment, my coworkers and my family, my husband Jerry Walker from Tech Services, who is also here. But the support was wonderful, and we appreciate the county and all they do for the employees and their families that are going through it. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Please stay and let's get a picture as soon as we go through the rest of these. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Commissioner Burke Pigler is back with us for 782. Mr. Manager. All right. 782 is to proclaim October 2019 as National Community Planning Month, and Trevor Lloyd from our Community Services Department is here.
Ah, there he is. Good morning, Trevor. It's good to see you. Glad you're here. So, community planning, as we all know, is so important, and having sat on the, the regional governing board, and we are working on the master plan, we are almost to the end of the master plan. Thank you, Lord, for that. And so, here's the proclamation related to community planning and plans. Whereas, community planning and plans can help manage change, which is constant and affects all cities, counties, townships, rural areas, and other places in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas, the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand and support and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Washoe County Planning Commission, the Washoe County Board of Adjustment, the Washoe County Parcel Map Review Committee, citizens advisory boards, and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of Washoe County through the formulation and implementation of the county's master plans and development code. And whereas, the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professional planning support staff of the Planning and Building Division of the Washoe County Community Services Department, and recognize their continued commitment to public service. And now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as National Community Planning Month, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month throughout the United States and its territories, dated the 17th day of September 2019, and again, signed by our chairman, Vaughn Hartung. And Trevor, I can't tell you how much I appreciate everything you do for all of us, and so, thank you so much. You guys do a great job. Please.
Thanks.
Thank you. Trevor Lloyd with Planning and Building. And on behalf of the Planning and Building Division, I just wanted to express our gratitude to this commission in your continued acknowledgement of community planning and how essential it is for good quality of life for the residents that live here as we continue to grow as a, as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that'll take us to item 7A3, which is to proclaim October 2019 as Infant Safe Sleep Awareness Month. Looks like we've got quite the crowd from our Human Services Agency, and I believe Mr. Ryan Gustafson will be coming down for that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and I, I always take the opportunity, if I can, to support Human Services and all the work that they do at the Human Services Agency. We have a number of individuals, I want to point out over the audience, that are here with us today to advocate for a continued awareness that we, HSA, I know have been doing a lot of work with, and we've seen a number of billboards across Washoe County, and I want to thank HSA and all their work with those for infant safe and protecting some of the most vulnerable population within our community. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to read the proclamation to the commission. Whereas, unsafe sleep practices are one of the leading causes of death among otherwise healthy infants under the age of one in Washoe County. And whereas, there have been 18 deaths in Washoe County from fiscal years 2015 to 2019 due to unsafe sleeping situations. And whereas, babies can suffocate as a result of sleeping in an adult bed or in another dangerous sleep surfaces such as couches, armchairs, or pillows. And whereas, babies sleep safest when sleeping alone, on their back, in a crib, or a bassinet with a firm mattress and a tightly fitted sheet with no other items such as toys, pillows, or blankets in the sleep area where they, and when they are dressed appropriately so they will, do not overheat. And whereas, the Washoe County Human Services Agency Children's Services Division declares the month of October Infant Safe Sleep Awareness Month, in effort to prevent sudden unexplained infant deaths and promote sleep safety, sleep, safe sleep practices. Too many S's in here. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim October 2019 as Infant Safe Sleep Awareness Month, and encourages all Washoe County caregivers, parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, babysitters, childcare providers, healthcare providers, and all other practice safe sleep habits, and reduce the risk of accidental infant deaths. Dated the 17th day of September 2019, signed by our chair, Vaughn Hartung. And with me is Ryan Gustafson from the Human Services, and he'll make a few comments.
All right. Thank you, Ryan Gustafson, and thank you to the commission members. We take safe sleep and unsafe sleep-related fatalities very seriously in the Human Services Agency, as well as our partners with the Health District, as well as the Medical Examiner's Office. And with, with that, we would like that 18 that we've seen in the last five years to, to move down to zero over the next five years. And as such, we're really looking at doing some strategic campaigning and some marketing, and so, really trying to promote the ABCs of safe sleep. Again, that's, you know, infants alone, on their back, and then in their crib, and, and we've done some really strategic things. We do have billboards and bulletins throughout the Truckee Meadows, really, and that's really a year-long campaign, and that's going to be tied to a very strategic, month-long campaign that we are focusing on in October. And so, this is really just our opportunity to invite the community to join us in safe sleep awareness. Certainly would love to see some followers on Twitter at Washoe County, hashtag safe sleep. There's tips and there's resources to help raise awareness. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, Ryan. Mr. Chair, that'll take us to item 7A4, which is to proclaim October 2nd, 2019 as International Walk to School Day. And I believe MJ McLeod with the Washoe County School District is here for this proclamation as well. Welcome, MJ. It's always nice to see MJ.
Thank you. I'm probably not the best person to be reading this one because I live 25 miles out of town. It would take all day to get there, maybe the next day, but I'll go ahead. Proclamation. Whereas, parents driving children to school can account for up to 25% of the morning rush hour traffic in the vicinity of schools. And whereas, walking and bicycling to school reduces the number of vehicle trips in the vicinity of schools and potential conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians or bicyclists. Whereas, reducing the number of vehicles driving students to school results in increased safety, reduced traffic congestion, improved air quality, and less fuel consumption in the vicinity of schools. And whereas, the benefits related to physical activity at an early age play a leading role in reducing rates of heart disease, diabetes, and other obesity-related health problems among children. And whereas, children walking and bicycling to school together with parents and caregivers opens opportunities to mentor children about pedestrian and bicycle safety and its benefits related to health and the environment. And whereas, walking and bicycling to school offers an opportunity to build physical activity into both parents' and children's daily routines. And now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim October 2nd, 2019 as International Walk to School Day, and encourages all Washoe County citizens to walk or bicycle to school with their children while celebrating the benefits of increased safety and health. Dated the 17th day of September 2019, by Vaughn Hartung, Chair, Washoe County Commissioner.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I do have a, a quick moment. Thank you, Vice Chair Lucy and County Commissioners. The event is designed to draw attention to the simple joys of walking whenever and wherever possible. Unfortunately, this very wonderful and fun time of year is overshadowed, overshadowed by the very real and alarming fact that we've already had five students injured in a school year that's only five weeks old. Safe routes to school will continue to expand their efforts and create change through education encouragement, engineering enforcement, and events like this one. The Safe Routes is a supporting member of a very effective Vision Zero, and Vision Zero presented to the commission just very recently, and we appreciate your support. It's a responsibility of all of us to foster and inspire change for a safer, for the vulnerable user all throughout the community, even if you're very far away. The media coverage and the elected official's support can make the difference in drivers and pedestrians alike being more aware of each other. Celebrating the Walk to School Day and events like it can be just the catalyst that will influence everyone to leave their keys and just to lace up their shoes. So, I appreciate all the support that has continued throughout the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, MJ. We appreciate it. Mr. Manager? Vice Chair, our last proclamation today is to proclaim September 24th, 2019 as National Voter Registration Day. So, along with Commissioner Jung, we have Deanna Spicula, our Registrar of Voters.
Thanks, Ms. Spicula. Whereas, one of the most precious and fundamental rights of United States citizens is the right to vote. And whereas, registering to vote empowers eligible citizens to exercise their right to vote and have a voice in the electoral process promoting civic engagement. And whereas, Washoe County has over 275,000 registered voters, which continues to increase as our community grows. And whereas, the voter registration process in Nevada and in Washoe County is now easier and more convenient than ever, with registration available through in-person registration at the Office of Registrar of Voters, mail-in applications available at local libraries and post offices, at state voter registration agency, and through online voter registration available at www reregistertovotenv.gov. And whereas, September has been proclaimed National Voter Registration Month. And whereas, Americans across the nation have celebrated National Voter Registration Day on the 4th Tuesday in September, serving as a single day where we reaffirm a strong sense of civic pride and encourage our fellow citizens to register to vote. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim September 24th, 2019 as National Voter Registration Day. And with us is the Registrar of Voters, Ms. Deanna Spicula. Would you like to say a few words? Or, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Deanna Spicula, the Washoe County Registrar of Voters. I want to thank the commissioners for all acknowledging National Voter Registration Day. We want to express the importance for all eligible citizens in Washoe County to register to vote so they can exercise their very fundamental right to vote. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. At this time, what we'll do is we'll take a quick motion and accept the proclamations, and then we'll, everybody will stick around. Can we do pictures?
With approval of the proclamations?
I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Pigler, second by Commissioner Jung, all those in favor. Want to make sure we get public comment. Oh, yes. Do we have any public comment?
We do have public comment, Ms. Elise Weatherly.
All right. Ms. Elise Weatherly. Didn't see it on my screen.
Thank you, Elise Weatherly. What I was doing when I was reading and listening to you guys, I'm going, what is the goal in this? Why do we have proclamation days, right? And I itemized them, I went, it's all about safety. It's pretty much about safety. And what, what I will say is, I stand with Ms. Herman, I was thinking, I was kind of chuckling because we couldn't walk to a charter school either. You know, we would have to spend the whole day walking there and back and forth. I have nothing against it, but to, I would, what I would like to do is, as a citizen, I would like to proclaim 9/19 of 19 as the test of the release day. I know a person that is going to be released from Washoe County jail, all right? This person is under the test between me and her friend of hers. Is she going to go back? Or is she going to have, because we have a proclamation day, free everything for the lawbreakers? Because unfortunately, this person is a lawbreaker, and she wants everything for free. So, rehab, free housing for anybody that actually ends up in jail because they just don't want to work. Does that make any sense to you guys? And Ms. Jung, I love the comment about eligible citizen. You know what? And I won't keep you too, I'm too much long. If I had my way, Elon Musk would be considered an eligible citizen and can run for presidency of the United States. But the problem is, just like with voting, how do you assure that when you're sending in a vote via the email, that you're registering to vote via mail? How do you know that that person is the right person? There's not a whole lot of validation that takes place when you go to vote. And I would say, let's have a day of that too, where we have verification of validity of voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Seeing no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Pigler, motion, second by Commissioner Jung. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. All right, we voted for you. All right, we got that. So, what I would do is, we're going to take a brief recess and have everybody come down. We would like to invite Ms. Thompson and Ms. Goli Ceeles from the Health Department to come and take pictures with us as well.
All right. Here we go. And three, two.
Do you want them with us holding it? Sure. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
They should be on the floor there.
They are.
My husband dressed up.
I'm real scared of my wife.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, here we go.
And three, two.
Wait.
Wait.
Here we go.
Three, two.
Congratulations.
Trevor, where's Trevor?
Trevor, Trevor, I feel like we're...
Oh.
All right.
Human Services.
Still stolen from state.
Super stuff.
Let's try to fill in the second row here.
All right.
Fill in here.
Because I still can't.
Come on.
Fill in the state.
OSHA.
All right. Let me do this.
Still can't get everybody.
I may have to...
There we go.
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 Let's try to fill in the second row here. All right, fill in here. Because I still can't. Come on. Fill in the state. Now that's...
OSHA.
All right. Let me do this. Still can't get everybody. I may have to...
There we go.
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 No, that's hard stuff.
That's better.
That was so...
Deanna. Um, ask the children to come. If you, hopefully you can come by this direction. Yeah. Or if you want to leave the diocese, you ask for a voter license.
Thank you, guys.
Come on, Deanna.
Come on, Deanna.
My wife doesn't see me.
It's her fault. Blame her.
Well, thank you, everybody, that joined us today for the proclamations. It's always an honor to, you know, take a minute to acknowledge those that are doing some great work within our community. So, moving on to item eight is our donations, and I would ask Commissioner Burke Pigler if she can read our donations for us this morning.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. So, our donations are as follows. Eight A, recommendation to accept monetary donations to Washoe County Animal, Regional Animal Services. And I see they have left for in the amount of $8,464.73, which was received between April 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2019, to be used for humane care and treatment of sick and/or injured stray, abandoned, or at-risk animals. And want to express thanks to everybody for these contributions. We are so blessed here in Washoe County because we have so many citizens who care about animals and are always helping us out with the needs. Eight B is a recommendation to retroactively approve in-kind donations in a total estimated value of $249 from the Discovery, the Salvation Army, the Trucky Meadows Community College, and join together Nevada, Northern Nevada, to be used as raffle prizes for the Washoe County Sheriff's Office for their resource fair, which will be held on, which was held on July 22nd, 2019. And again, we thank all of our wonderful citizens for this. And then also, we have eight C one, which is a recommendation to acknowledge, number one, acknowledge various donated items totaling an estimated market value of $2,654.60, retroactive to the period of June 26, 2019 through July 31, 2019. And two, accept cash donations of, to Washoe County Human Services to support child welfare activities in the amount of $2,111.10, retroactive to the period of June 18, 2019 through July 31, 2019. And finally, last but certainly not least, eight C two is a recommendation to accept cash donations to the Human Services Agency Senior Services Fund to support operations of the Washoe County Senior Centers in the amount of $2,066.75, retroactive for the period June 18, 2019 through July 31, 2019. Thank you all very much, everybody. We are so lucky to have so many wonderful citizens who help us get through the needs of our, of our underprivileged families and, and our underprivileged animals and our underprivileged seniors. And for that, we thank you very much. And that's an informal motion for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Burke Pigler. And before we move on, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Ms. Elise Weatherly.
All right. Ms. Weatherly.
Elise Weatherly, I wanted to bring something up and ask you to consider it. I know this is really hard for us to imagine. When I have conversations with people and they tell me things that I don't really buy into or believe, I don't just dismiss them, I actually do some research. I had a discussion with Dr. Chuck Andrus at Fairgrounds Animal Hospital a while ago. And you know, he had the audacity to tell me that there are such a thing as evil animals. And I went, no, you've got to be kidding, right? There are evil people, but evil animals, too. And I will remind you guys that there was a woman here many months ago who was full of sorrow because her dog got attacked and killed by another dog. And that dog, there was no repercussions, there was no aftermath effect. I've had a discussion with a teenager, and he says, well, that should be the owner's responsibility, right, to keep that dog in check. We have some owners that don't take responsibility for things, unfortunately. But that animal is still who that animal is, and probably would have killed another dog, given the opportunity to do so. So I don't know how you do this. I love animal rescue. I was watching something the other day. We're going to assume that every person, like every animal, is just wonderful and everything, but the problem is, is that we have to make a differentiation and a determination. And I'm not sure how you'd do that. I used to house sit for a guy that had a seville. Is that one of those small African cats, you know, one of the small wild cats? It was declawed, thank goodness. And they had a dog, and I used to go over there and take care of it. I tried to treat those animals exactly the same. That cat was evil. That cat used to just like, with the unclawed paws, reach out and whack that dog until it practically knocked it out. And after I did some investigation, I thought, well, you know what? I don't want to hang out with evil animals. I don't want to hang out with evil people. I don't want to hang out with, you know, wickedness. So how in the world do you guys sit up there and, and make rules and laws for everybody as if everybody was the same? The District Attorney's Office knows that's not true. There are some people out there that need to go to jail. And the same thing, unfortunately, you guys done with your cell phones, or? The same thing applies to animals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. All right, we have seen no further public comment. We do have a motion. Do you have a second? A second from Commissioner Herman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Place your votes on your, on your screen.
It didn't come up yet.
Wait, it's coming. There it is. Please affirm your votes with, motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Jung being absent. Okay, Mr. Manager, we are on to item nine.
Yes, excuse me, Mr. Vice Chair. Item nine is a presentation and discussion on the 80th Legislative Session Report for 2019. Ms. Jamie Rodriguez is here to provide the report.
Welcome, Ms. Rodriguez.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I know it's been a little bit of a longer day for you guys, so I'll try to get through this fairly quickly, as I've met with you all about session. So the 80th Legislation, Legislative Session, excuse me, started Monday, February 4th, and ended on June 3rd of this year. We had a total of 1,164 bills that were introduced this session. We, as Washoe County, monitored a total of 760 of those bills. That's a total of about 65% of the bills that were introduced this session. A total of 301 bills passed that have some level of impact to Washoe County. And so, we, that's a little less than half of the bills that we monitored actually passed or passed with final impact to us. The last point, we had 197 fiscal note requests. So that is a process of the Legislature. The Legislative Council Bureau reviews bills and sends out fiscal note requests if they believe that bill may have a fiscal impact to counties or local jurisdictions. That does not mean that we had a fiscal impact of all 197 of those bills, but we were requested for a total of 197 and did respond to all 197 fiscal note requests. The Legislature, we, as Washoe County, have a legislative team that helps best represent us. We have our executive team, which is a former manager, John Slaughter, Assistant County Manager, Dave Solaro, Assistant County Manager, Kate Thomas, Assistant County Manager, Christine Vuletic, myself. We also had our legislative liaisons, which were Commissioner Bob Lucy and Commissioner Kitty Jung. With me all day down in Carson for those 120 days, we also have Cory Sulfarino and Mary Sarah Kinner from the Sheriff's Office, Jennifer Noble from the District Attorney's Office, Kendra Burchi from the Public Defender's Office, and Joel Gutman from the Health District. Lastly, we do have two contracts, one with Lisa Gianoli and one with Alfredo Alonso from Lewis and Roca, who also help represent the county during those 120 days. I would be remiss if I did not also thank the very large number of county employees who help review all the legislation that we get, the fiscal note requests, so that we do have the information necessary so that we can best represent the county and these impacts of the legislation. Quickly, before I get into the bills from this session and what's in your report, I do want to point out, last session, we did an overview of the fiscal impacts from the 2017 session to the county. Not to say that we didn't have any fiscal impacts this session. Unfortunately, they, the majority of them, the vast majority of them, are fiscal impacts that cannot be determined. So those are some of the worker comp, labor negotiations, some of those bills. That really is going to take a good chunk of time for us to really be able to determine what those fiscal impacts are. So that was not our focus this session. So instead, this session, I, we are going to be reviewing the bills that you all took positions on during the session. We had quite a few that we were opposed to, that were negotiated and settled in a position that we would not have been opposed to, so I want to kind of highlight some of those. So first, we're going to start, these were all bills that we were in support of, that did pass. All bills that we supported or that you took positions of support on did, in fact, pass. AB 70 revises provisions relating to the open meeting law. This came out of the Attorney General's Task Force, and our own Paul Leparelli actually sat on that committee. This is a piece of legislation that really helps more give clarification to open meeting law, and some changes that some entities will have to make, making meetings more available. Will have very little impact on the practices we have here in Washoe County. AB 102, this enhances the criminal penalty for certain crimes committed against family members of first responders. So an additional charge may be levied against an individual if they commit a crime against a first responder. This now extends that to the immediate family members of those first responders if the crime was committed against them based on their relation to that first responder. AB 240 requires representatives from certain counties to meet jointly and prepare reports addressing the orderly management of growth in their region. This bill impacts Washoe County, Carson City, Douglas County, Lyon County, and Story County. Idea being that we, as a region, if something happens in one of our counties, it likely impacts the others. So this will require us to meet biannually until 2023 to discuss how we're managing our growth, and then a final report will have to be submitted and summarized based on what those discussions were. Last bill, AB 301, this is one that makes some changes to the reporting for the Sheriff's Office to you, the Board of County Commissioners. Previously, they had to report to you quarterly. This changes that to biannually, so they will have to come to you twice a year. And included in that report will now have to be any jail deaths that have occurred if those investigations are completed, so that they can go over that. There's some additional changes that the jail will have to make to some of their reporting. And then lastly, the jail will be required to work with the State Department of Health and Human Services to coordinate care for mental health and substance abuse treatments while those, while individuals are in custody. SB 12, this is a bill that we did support. This was a bill introduced by NACO. It allows for an audit of telecommunications providers to be paid for with E-911 funds, is what it started as. This bill was amended to include provisions from SB 25. That was the bill introduced by the City of Reno to allow for the E-911 funds to be paid for, or to be used, excuse me, towards personnel for the implementation of the body cam provisions. I will point out that that is still at your discretion, as the Board of County Commissioners, whether that's an allowable use you want to open to them. But to also help address some of the concerns that we had raised about funding and if there wasn't enough money, and how would that be addressed, the bill does also add a funding priority list. So it states that all provisions of the original bill related to dispatch has to be funded primarily. After that comes the purchase and maintenance of the body cameras, followed by the body cam personnel, and then lastly, training for body cam personnel if you, as a board, choose to open all those funding options. SB 301, this was a bill sponsored by Senator Ratty. The concern was, there's a multitude of affordable housing options within this state, but it's really hard for individuals, or it can be very difficult for individuals, to find all that information. So what this bill will do is make one centralized state database for people to go in and see what entities offer affordable housing, what programs towards affordable housing are available. The impact to us is that we will have to submit any information we have of affordable housing in Washoe County to the state for that statewide database. Last is SB 279. Again, these are all bills that we did support. This is a bill revising provisions related to general improvement districts. This is the bill that made it so that all general improvement districts have to follow the same procedures that we, as local governments, have to follow with related, with regards, excuse me, to selling of any property. The last two bills, these are bills that we did oppose per, as they were brought to the BCC the last time before session ended. However, there were substantial changes in these. So the first is SB 245. This was the torque cap increase. So currently, the torque cap is $100,000. The bill originally increased that, starting this fiscal year, to $250,000, and it also added a $1 million gross negligence option for local governments, which obviously would be very fiscally hard for us to support. Also, most insurance companies said that that was not something that they would be able to offer us insurance coverage for. Given that information, we were able to negotiate that bill. So now, in July 1 of 2020, the torque cap will go from $100,000 to $150,000, and then a second increase will occur on July 1 of 2022 to $200,000. We were not opposed to the increase of the torque cap. It's been $100,000 for quite some time. We just need to make sure that we had the funding to support that. The last bill is SB 287, revises provisions related to public records. So this was a substantial public records bill. In the original version, it did include a civil penalty of up to $250,000, not only against the entity for denying a public records request, but also individual county staff members who would deny those public records requests. It was really stated that the point was to get at bad actors, and I think where the bill ultimately landed, it will do just that. So now, as passed, if a public entity willfully fails to comply with the public records law, they can file in court. It's $1,000 for the first violation, $5,000 for the second violation, and $10,000 for the third, and any subsequent violation within a 10-year period. Important, we also didn't want people to make money off of public records requests. It gives a bad incentive for people to file public records requests. So those penalties are actually paid to the Division of the State Library, Archives, and Public Records. The bill does remove the ability to charge for extraordinary use of personnel and resources, but it does actually now clarify or change it to state that the entities can charge for actual costs. So it's not that we can't still charge for staff time or any of those impacts that come to us, it just removes that extraordinary use provision. And one of the last big changes that happened in the bill, if, currently, if a public record cannot be made available within the five days of the request, we have to submit a letter to them stating when the record will be available. If that letter states it's going to be available in 30 days, if on day 30, that record is not available, we have to submit in writing to the requester why the record is not yet available, and the next date that we believe that record will be available to those entities. So again, based on a lot of the conversations around these bills, around the bill, it really will get at the bad actors and the complaints that existed without causing detriment to local jurisdictions. Last, or not last, next, we have bills that the Commissioners are required to take action on. So AB 81, the action that you would have to take for this is nominations to be sent to the governor for the newly created Board of Indigent Defense Services. That, this board has already taken that action, and your Assistant County Manager, Kate Thomas, has been appointed to that board. Next is AB 272. This is in process, and the sheriff should be, Sheriff's Office should be bringing this to you shortly. It does require counties to designate a forensic laboratory to conduct ballistic testing in our region. SB 89, this is a slightly different bill, or a slightly different situation. The bill does not require any action from this board, but what the bill does is open the E-911 body camera funding options to the school district and their police officers. In our discussions with them, we had concerns that they were being added to the E-911 board as a voting member, and that that board would become heavily weighted towards body cam and not dispatch, which is the original intent of that funding option. So working with the school district, they agreed that they did not need to sit on the board, but they did want to have a non-voting member there and available if there were questions. And so what will be coming to you, I believe at the next meeting, will be the provision to add them as a non-voting member to the E-911 board. That was put on the record, though, which is why we've included it in bills for you to take action on. The last one is AB 236. This was a large criminal justice reform bill. This will be coming to you much later, because it's not enacted, this provision is not enacted until July 1 of 2020. But Washoe County will have two members that we are able to appoint to the Nevada Local Justice Reinvestment Coordinating Council. LCB is not even ready for those appointments, so that'll be sometime coming, but that will be coming. You've all been provided copies of the final legislative report. The report is also available on our website. It's a public document. This covers all 301 bills that passed that had some level of impact on Washoe County. And just the order, or what's all included in there is the highlighted legislation. Those are the bills I just ran through with you. Bills that require the Commission to take action, bills that the Commission is eligible to take action if they so see fit, assembly bills, Senate bills. The governor vetoed a total of three bills this session, too, that we were watching. So those two are in there, your Washoe County team. And then lastly, what was included during the legislative session, Commissioners had asked for specific topic items of bills that included those topics. So at the back is glossary, for lack of a better phrase, for those. So those topics, the bills that passed, and where in the report you could find those bills, if you want to read more specifically about those information. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Commissioner Burke Pigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
to add them as a non-voting member to the E-911 Board. That was put on the record, though, which is why we've included it in bills for you to take action on. The last one is AB 236. This was a large criminal justice reform bill. This will be coming to you much later because it's not enacted. This provision is not enacted until July 1 of 2020. But Washoe County will have two members that we are able to appoint to the Nevada Local Justice Reinvestment Coordinating Council. LCB is not even ready for those appointments, so that'll be sometime coming, but that will be coming. You've all been provided copies of the final legislative report. The report is also available on our website. It's a public document. This covers all 301 bills that passed that had some level of impact on Washoe County. And just the order, or what's all included in there is the highlighted legislation. Those are the bills I just ran through with you, bills that require the Commission to take action, bills that the Commission is eligible to take action if they so see fit, assembly bills, Senate bills. The Governor vetoed a total of three bills this session, too, that we were watching. So those two are in there, your Washoe County team. And then lastly, what was included during the legislative session, Commissioners had asked for specific topic items of bills that included those topics. So at the back is glossary, for lack of a better phrase for those. So those topics, the bills that passed, and where in the report you could find those bills if you want to read more specifically about those information. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Rodriguez, on AB 240, which requires a representative from other counties to meet, does it designate who that representative is going to be? Is it to have to be the county manager? Or does it, well, could it be one of the assistant county managers or someone else?
So as listed, it is the county manager or their designee.
Okay. All right. And then on the body cam personnel, explain to me which personnel that is. Is that the, I mean, it's not the people who are going to be wearing the body cams.
So, as we discussed and why we were not supportive of that legislation originally, as drafted, it's very vague. It just says personnel related to the body cameras. So part of our concern was that could be the actual training of the officers who have to wear the body cameras. As it was presented, it's for the forensic technicians who actually edit the videos. But again, important to note, the legislation opens up the eligible uses for the fund. You, as the Board of County Commissioners, make the ultimate determination of, within those eligible uses, we will approve whatever portions of those you want to approve.
Okay, good. And then finally, on SB 287, which revises provisions relating to governing public records, does that apply to all government entities, including GIDs?
It does apply to all local governments, or all state governments, excuse me. So it's state, local, cities. So yes, GIDs would be included in the open records.
Good, thank you.
Very welcome.
Any further questions by the Commissioners in regards? Jamie, I want to thank you for, or Ms. Rodriguez, I want to thank you for your time. I know you worked diligently down there, and this session was very, it was an interesting session. We had a lot of freshman legislators that were in roles that they maybe are not accustomed to. And so we spent some time educating them on a number of Washoe County issues. I also want to thank Joelle Gummens and Mary Sarah, who are with us. Jeff Clark was also part of that team. A number, we did have a large presence down there consistently, Commissioner Jung. I mean, there was a lot of time spent down at the session this year, and it was successful for us, you know. And it was beneficial to not only educate the legislators about northern Nevada issues, those that are not aware, but just spending time working the bills. There was a significant amount of those. So thank you for all the efforts from our team and yourself, Ms. Rodriguez. We really appreciate it. With that, seeing no further questions, I'm looking for a motion to, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, looking for a motion to accept the report.
Accept the report. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by Commissioner Herman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Please place your votes on your tablets. Please affirm your votes. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we are on to our final public comment. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Vice Chair, item number 10 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission agenda.
All right. First off, we have Ms. Elise Weatherly signed in, and then we have Ms. Lori Beach.
Elise Weatherly, I thought I'd go ahead and do a summary. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you for the extra time that you gave to Tammy. I was praying that we would actually have more time to speak because it's hard to get through everything that we want to say in three minutes. Grateful to have the time at all, grateful that there was some integrity by letting her, you know, go with her full time. What I will say is that I went and saw, I went to witness Judge Chris Wilson today at Justice of the Peace, Sparks, JOP, right? It was an eviction case. The accuser had his ducks and his docks in a row. The defendant did not. The defendant claimed to have disability. The judge asked her what the disability was. I don't know if that's legal or not, to ask somebody in a public, you know, forum, what your disability is. Well, she said that she had been in a construction accident and she couldn't, you know, couldn't move her hands to work. Well, she was holding her papers and stuff, so number one, there was a lie. And the judge did what he always does, and he found it in the favor of the guilty. And so I would like to have something done about that because I think that's absolutely wrong. I had another friend who's a Realtor, who has no real political affiliations. He helped me work through some things the other day. He was the one that helped me realize that Steve Bond, when he stood up on that stage at Summit Christian Church, he used the word "exactly" from the Bible that he used to take up an offering. It was exactly for a divorced woman with young children. Guess what? It was, I'm sorry, for a widow, a young widow with young children. Turned out to be for a divorced woman that had grown children that lost her job because of her bad attitude. That, to me, is lying. It's not against the law, but it is against God's law, and I would like to, you know, present that case to God. The other thing is that I told this friend, I said, I voted for, you know why I voted for Donald Trump? Because Ben Carson didn't get the nomination. I had two people to choose from, Donald Trump and Hillary Clinton. I watched the Benghazi congressional hearings. I believe that Hillary Clinton was involved in murder. I don't vote for murderers. I vote for people that have, you know, truth-stretching things more than I vote for murderers. I voted for him because of my faith, because of my belief in the judicial system that says murder is bad. And, you know, can I prove it? Not really. I probably can't prove it. But I will say that, you can see my T-shirt here, I don't fit in. I wouldn't fit in with you guys. This is, I was in a rock band. I was the girl. I was the one that was out of place. So I girlified my T-shirt because I am a girl. And the thing is that I'm not going to fit in with everybody's thing that they do. And when I refer to Jason Guanasso, who did not represent Marvin Neil, but he did represent Christopher Daher in my case against Exile Christian School, if I rename him Jason Snake Guanasso, is that illegal? Can I be held contempt of court or liable for slander if I give somebody a middle name of the way I think about him? Yes, I don't think Donald Trump is absolutely truthful, but I also don't believe he's a murderer. And guess what? We have to stake the claim, right, of who we're going to support and who we're not going to support. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Ms. Lori Beach.
Lori Beach, for the record, I normally use this last comment to come back and say thank you. We really appreciate it because the first one's to give you our complaints and for you to look at us like we care. So I like to come back and say thank you. This one, not so much. Tammy, before she left, I don't know if this matters, it's through you, I guess, on the Hesco barriers between Chicotty and Water Ash on the other side is now dry. That might be a good place to start looking to move some of that water that you're trying to move to the other side on the Red Pine side. That would be because that way it's on the contained side of the Hesco barriers, and it's dry. So that might be a good option to go to spread that water out. Because like I say, I'm very personally, Lori Beach is grateful for what you are trying to do. I know you are constrained by budget and ability because we are not your only constituents. We're not the only money-suck of the county right now. So the other one I wanted to bring up more, on a personal matter that I was personally offended, my mom always told me, if the shoe fits, wear it. I must say, the shoe did not fit, but unfortunately, I'm kind of wearing it for my valley. If every community has their good, they have their bad, they have their crap, they have their great. I'm not saying Lemon Valley doesn't because I'm sure we have our share of garbage. If someone is hurting, interfering with our county workers and our contractors, even if it's a report that a blue car splashed me, those reports need to be made to the Washoe County, reporting through the sheriff. It's online, it's easy, anybody can do it. The worker can do it, the worker supervisor can do it. Because I know years ago, when I called the Sheriff's Department about all those speeding on Lemon Drive, we were told that the response and the people are dictated by the calls and the concerns. So if someone being harassed or endangered is only being reported to the county manager or to their supervisor, that is not letting the Sheriff's Department know that we have problems out there and maybe put another officer or two out there, even if it's just to run the circle of the road a couple times a day. And especially, as I've been informed, your road maintenance and everything is done on a schedule. So Dwayne, and I'm sure Mr. Solaro, know when you're going to have the bulk of your workers out there, so maybe someone can drive by. We all see it on the freeway where there's an NHP officer with his little whoop-whops on, warning motorists that there's something ahead. So thank you. I hope that wasn't too bad of a, not nice, but thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you, Mrs. Beach. All right, seeing no further public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. Any Commissioner, we are on to item 11, Commissioner Comments. I have a few, if there aren't any, in addition to what Mrs. Beach is saying, and unfortunately, the sheriff has left, but I have received a number of emails from some constituents in my district about just speeding in school zones. And being that we had a proclamation today by MGA Cloud and Safe Walk to School, you know, being Miss Beach pointed out, Lemon Valley Elementary's got some issues. We've got some issues at Lenz Elementary in my district, also at Hunsburger. I know a number of those schools. So if we can talk to the sheriff about, especially areas that are within the unincorporated area, have that addressed. I'm sure Incline has its fair share of issues as well. So just maybe if we can bring that up and put that on the sheriff's radar. One other thing I would ask is that I did, was reached out by Mrs. Winfield, who is also known as Sober Sally by many, who is a personal friend of mine who just had an event about recovery this last weekend on Saturday, and would ask that the Commission try to put together a proclamation acknowledging Recovery Month in Nevada for the month of September. So if we can get that potentially, Mr. Manager, for the last meeting of the month, that that's possible, or if not, we can try to do it in October and do it retroactive, but if we can make that proclamation, I would appreciate it. Anything further by any of the Commissioners? All right. Mr. Manager, do you have anything? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.